City Council, could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Currently, Honorable Mayor Schoenheimer.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Moore is absent. Alderman Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening reports to city officers. First item, comments by mayor, I do have a couple tonight. First of all, I want to thank Boy Scout Troop 48. They are kind of the unnoticed group in town. You notice the wreaths that are all around town. Those are the guys who go out and put those up on Thanksgiving morning. And they add so much to our community, and I want to personally, on behalf of the entire community, thank them for all of their great efforts and for getting out early on Thanksgiving to do that. Next item is a resolution of appreciation for Eric Montalano, and I'll read the resolution, if I may. Whereas Eric A. Montalano has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since May 1, 1991, and whereas Eric A. Montaleno did honorably retire from the city on November 21st, 2014, and whereas Eric A. Montalano served in the following positions during his dedicated career: firefighter, paramedic, from 1991 through 2003; promoted to lieutenant paramedic, 2003; appointed to battalion chief, EMT, 2007. During his career, he served as a certified fire investigator, department operations officer, public education committee, the puppet team, fire inspector, fire service instructor, and handled the department's statistical reporting. Whereas during his career with the city, Eric A. Montalano accomplished the following: He was awarded several honorable mentions from Lake Forest residents and received several certifications through the office of the state fire marshal. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Eric A. Montalano for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be in hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Eric A. Montalano this first day of December, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Eric, I see you back there. I'm not going to get away. (APPLAUSE).
(LAUGHING).
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 And finally, I just want to thank everyone who came out for the Market Square tree lighting on Friday. We had a great crowd. The Lake Forest course did not sound better, could not have sounded better, and it was a terrific evening. So, on behalf of everyone who put that together, and I want to remind everyone, when you're thinking about doing your holiday shopping, please think about coming to Lake Forest first. We've got some great merchants who will give you some great service and great products. So I look forward to seeing everyone on the square and in the west side. And that ends my comments. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager Bob Keighley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have just a couple of quick items. Number one, in front of you is a letter from ComEd that I just wanted to mention. In the months of December and January, they are going to be out doing their vegetation management program. This is basically to make sure that the trees along the lines are cleared so that we try and minimize the number of outages that we possibly have. Included in that letter is a map of the areas that they'll be working in. We will make sure that a copy of this is on our website, but we just wanted you to be aware of it in case you get phone calls from any of your constituents saying, hey, there's some people in my backyard, and I don't know who they are. But the police will also have information on where they're working around town and when, going from there. Second item is, I believe I forwarded to you this afternoon, an email that we got from Lake County Stormwater Management Commission, that the Forest Park Project and the Forest Park Project Board is a recipient this year of the 2014 Development of the Year. There is going to be a presentation in early January where the Forest Park Project Board will be there, but I know we locally are all very proud of the work that's been going on down at Forest Park, and I think it's important to recognize that this is regionally recognized now for its best practices that have been implemented down there as well. So congratulations to the Forest Park Project Board. And then finally, we have another presentation. I ask Chief Howell to please come forward.
(INAUDIBLE). 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 (LAUGHING). (APPLAUSE). 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 (LAUGHING). (APPLAUSE).
Okay, everybody on the council right now is wondering, what grade did you get in the class?
(LAUGHING). (APPLAUSE). 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 (LAUGHING). (APPLAUSE).
That completes my report for this evening. Thanks, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda this evening, comments by council members. First item, Finance Committee, consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2014 tax levy and grant final approval, presented by Elizabeth Halib, Finance Director.
The first item on the agenda this evening is the ordinance establishing the 2014 property tax levy. This was discussed at both the November 5 Finance Committee meeting on the capital budget, as well as the first reading approval by the city council on November 17. So unless you would like me to, I will not go through these detailed schedules, but simply go to the summary here, which provides an overview of the total proposed tax levy for the city, which is an increase of 1.88 percent. That includes the 1.5 percent increase limit under PTAL, Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, as well as a small increase due to new construction added to the tax rolls. At the bottom, you can see the projected impact on an average home. We use $800,000 as an average home in Lake Forest. The proposed tax levy would increase property taxes on an average home by $49, or 1.48 percent, and that reflects the portion of the tax levy related to the city and the library, which is about 23 percent of the total tax bill. No formal public hearing is required under Illinois statutes this year because the increase is not more than 5 percent over the prior year. So you are welcome to approve the tax levy ordinance, and I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any questions for Elizabeth? If not, I would ask for a motion to grant final approval.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item, approval of ordinances abating the 2014 tax levies for various GO alternate revenue bond issues, final approval, also presented by Elizabeth Halib.
Thank you, Mayor. This was also granted first reading approval on November 17. There are four ordinances in this packet that abate the debt service levy for debt service that would be due next year and paid from alternate revenue sources. This chart simply shows the gross amount of the debt service in the first column, and then by alternate revenue source shows the actual abatement applicable to each bond issue. So you have ordinances affecting the 2010B, 2010C, 2011A, and 2011B debt service levies for next year. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions on this for Elizabeth? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the ordinances abating the 2014 tax levies for various GO alternate revenue bond issues for final approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And last, but not least, consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule, ordinance is adopting new fees related to liquor license penalty and credit card service fees, and ordinance amending the city code relating to the direct debit program for the water bills, final approval. Again, Elizabeth Halib.
This packet of items was also discussed on November 5 and November 17. The slide here just provides a summary. You have an ordinance adopting the comprehensive fee schedule with the changes denoted on Exhibit A, and you also have ordinances proposing two new fees, one, the liquor license penalty fee, and a credit card service fee effective for building permit payments. Currently, credit card payments cannot be made on building permits. Community Development would like to offer that, and therefore pass through the credit card fee of up to 3 percent, and then on daily parking fees, 25 cents per transaction. Any other credit card transactions for the city would be done with the city absorbing the credit card fees associated with that. So I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Anyone here? If not, I need a motion to grant final approval of the proposed ordinances.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Any other comments by council members this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Property and Public Land Committee, consideration of a recommendation from the Property and Public Land Committee in support of a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement for property located on the northwest corner of Western and Laurel avenues, the former municipal services site. Approve the resolution, presented by Alderman Reisenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PPL is recommending that city council approve a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with Focus Development for the former municipal services site. In September, the PPL recommended Focus Development to city council following a vetting process that included several RFQs, several RFPs, and interviews associating with both of those processes. Focus met the development parameters of the '07 and '08 community vision process that was also amended in 2012. Highlights of the development concept include significant open space that would be accessible to the public, high-quality architecture, a variety of housing types, enhanced streetscapes, and extensive landscaping. Upon approval of the purchase agreement, Focus Development will prepare a detailed land plan, conduct the necessary technical studies, develop detailed architectural and landscape plans, and then introduce these concepts tentatively scheduled at the December 10 Plan Commission meeting. Public hearings are then anticipated with the Plan Commission and Building Review Board during the months of January and February. Closing the property is scheduled to occur midsummer. Separately, the Plan Commission is beginning work on the Tax Increment Financing District, or TIF, to support the site cleanup, infrastructure improvements, and streetscape enhancements. And once again, Mr. Mayor, the PPL is recommending moving forward with this purchase agreement.
Thank you, Alderman. Any questions for Alderman Reisenberg or for city attorney Phil Pini? Opportunity, anyone here at the public who'd like to comment on this particular matter? Seeing none, I would then ask for an approval if appropriate by the city council to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager, the city's consultant, and the city attorney to finalize the terms of the purchase agreement and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I know we have some folks from Focus here. Tim, any comments on your behalf?
No, we're just excited to get started.
Great, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, consideration of an ordinance authorizing and directing negotiations for the approval of certain real property, first reading and if desired, final approval, presented by city attorney Victor Philpini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In furtherance of the item that you just passed, when the PPL committee started to look at redevelopment proposals for the municipal services site, it became obvious as part of that process that the effective redevelopment of that site would also require the city to acquire what is effectively the hole in the doughnut, which is the property at 120 Laurel. Throughout that, and also in the Focus proposal as it was presented, that property was an integral part of trying to make an effective outcome from the current situation to what is anticipated for the future. The city has approached the owners of that property and have made offers. Originally, when the property had been first reviewed prior to the recession, the city did get an appraisal, and the appraisal showed the property somewhere in the vicinity of $500,000. After the recession and the city revisited it, the city first approached the owners and sought to effect a deal at a price that was reflective of a modest downward adjustment from what had been a prior appraisal, but that offer was not accepted. The city has, as a result, sought and obtained an updated appraisal that is reflective of the property value today. The property has not had any significant attention in terms of maintenance or upgrades since prior to the recession, and as a result, the property has, as many properties in the city have experienced, lost value, and that value loss is probably more pronounced because of the lack of any additional maintenance. The appraisal that we did get showed the property at $380,000. In light of the fact that the most recent presentation, I'm sorry, proposal that was presented to those owners was not accepted, the next step in the process to acquire this property would be to have an ordinance directing that a final offer be made and negotiations concluded to see whether or not this property can be purchased as part of an arm's-length negotiation. The city does have the opportunity, in connection with the proposed Tax Increment Financing District, to pursue the acquisition of this property through eminent domain, and if the negotiations, that is the topic of the ordinance before you, are not successful, that would be an alternative then available to the city council. So the action that we are asking tonight is that the council authorize that this final offer be authorized and communicated to the property owners, and that negotiations be allowed to proceed with a February 1 deadline for trying to accomplish that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Any questions for Vic?
Is it appropriate to discuss what our initial, where our offer to them was, or is that inappropriate?
I think it's fine.
You think it's fine?
Vic, would you?
Vic, what was our offer to them?
When the city approached the owners after the recession, and again, this was based on an appraisal that was in the $500,000 range in the pre-recession era, what we offered was, I want to make sure I don't have this in any way incorrect, I believe that the city offered a two-part offer. One was for the property value, which the city set at 450, and then again, that was without the appraisal, and as it turns out, that is approximately $70,000 higher than market value. The city was also offering very generous relocation expenses that would be in the amount of $125,000. The city also, in conferring with the owners who had identified an alternative residence, presented the opportunity to help them finance that, and that financing would have been at an amount to cover the gap between what they would receive from the city for their own property and what they would be purchasing it for. The city would not be outing money from that, it would just be an investment, but a long-term investment for the city.
So we offered 450,000, and then $125,000 for relocation and other sundry items, and then offered to finance the note. Did you say they turned that down?
They did. And just to put this in perspective, the value of the city property, as we've reached an arm's-length negotiation, is a gross amount of about $26 a square foot and a net amount of about $19 a square foot, between $19 and $20 a square foot. The amount that we are offering, if you look at the package as a whole, was over $120 a square foot. So the city was making a very generous offer to the owners of the property, and it was turned down.
So, and again, the appraisal that we received is for 380,000. So if you add up the full cash proceeds from the city that are on the table, it's almost double what the property appraisal is.
It's a good approximation.
And that was done, as I understand it, in recognition of the fact that these are longstanding residents of the community. We had no interest in doing anything but making their life easier, and that was rejected. So in the long run, we're going to clean up this site, we're going to get it ready, and if, in the fullness of that process, time passes and the market changes and there's a problem, we will be ready for the next cycle. And so, you know, I think it's important to understand that this is going to happen now, and it's going to happen as quickly as we can make it happen.
And the city has included this as part of its planning process over the last
Ten years.
Yeah, roughly nine to 10 years. And so this is not something which is an ill-considered or hastily-considered approach. This is something that has been well-recognized and communicated to the owners over that period of time.
Mr. Mayor and fellow Aldermen, I have not been involved in a matter like this since I joined the city council in May, and I am somebody who has a reputation of taking process in anything I do very seriously. I have been very comfortable with the process that we have undertaken so far in this negotiation. It's delicate, it matters, we're dealing with people and their homes, their home, this is a shared home. I feel like we're really trying hard to make this work. I'm very comfortable, I've sat at a number of meetings where every issue that I've raised about this, I have been very satisfied with the answers that I've been given, both by the city attorney and members of city staff, as well as those of you who have more experience in this than I. So, I will just say, I hope this works out, I hope that we are able to reach a satisfactory negotiation. Obviously, this parcel matters to us, and our community members matter to us, and we're considering, obviously, the people who live in this home, as well as what's right for the community at large, and we're trying to keep track of all that at the same time. But so far, I am very comfortable with the process that's been undertaken, and as a newbie, I just want to say that, that I feel good about the way we're doing things. I just, I hope it works out well.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the community on this particular matter? Come forward, sir, and state your name and address, please.
Paul Haiman, 511 Beverly, 56-year resident of Lake Forest. Let me read from the resolution passed by the city council on September 2, 2014, regarding the old municipal facility. The city has received no meaningful development offers and has been unable to affect the development of this property. At this point, I would have stopped, but instead, TESCA Associates was hired, more sunken costs. With this ordinance, the city is about to sink another $450,000, plus another $125,000 in additional costs into this development. I would vote no on this ordinance, or at least abstain from this vote. I would at least hold out until after the public hearing by the plan commission on December 10 to consider the establishment of the TIF district, because without the TIF, I think this project has real problems. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comments on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I did
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, actually, Vic, this is for you. There appears to be, now I'm missing the page, it's the third of the matter we're discussing, page three at the bottom, I think has a typo on the date. It's probably not a huge deal, but it says by February 2, 2014. I think that needs to be 2015.
Twenty fifteen, yes. I haven't updated my calendar.
Okay. I just, I happened to, in fact, I just picked it up tonight, I didn't notice it when I read it.
Thank you, I appreciate the catch on that. And, Mr. Mayor, if I might note two things. By adopting this ordinance, and we are recommending, if I didn't say both waiver of the first reading and adoption tonight, we're not taking any action that is irrevocable. If the city decides not to go forward with the TIF, that's really a separate determination in this process, and by taking this process, it doesn't commit the city to go anything, go anywhere beyond the negotiations. What it does provide, however, is a point through which the city can exercise various options that might be available to us. So, it's part of a process, it is not the conclusion of any process, nor is it the decision with finality on any matter.
Thanks, Vic. Any other comments or questions? Vic, point of order, do we need a separate motion to waive?
We should have a motion to waive the first reading and a motion to approve with the correction and the insertion of the $380,000 number.
So, I will ask for a motion to waive first reading of the attached ordinance authorizing final negotiations for the acquisition of the property at 120 East Laurel Avenue for the appraised value. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay.
Thank you, and I need a motion to approve the attached ordinance authorizing final negotiations for the acquisition of the property at 120 East Laurel Avenue for the appraised value of $380,000 with the modification as referenced earlier by council. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Pity. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a motion directing city staff to prepare the necessary bid documents and solicit bids for demolition of the structures on the city's Laurel Avenue property, again, presented by Alderman Reisenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most everybody knows, there are many vacant buildings and structures at the Laurel Avenue site following municipal services relocation to the north end of the Conway Park Office Park, Conway Park Office Park. The structures need to be demolished to make the site ready for the proposed focused development, and the winter months seem best to begin this demolition. So, PPL recommends authorizing staff to solicit bids and proposals, which would then be presented to city council for approval at its January meeting.
Any questions for Alderman Reisenberg? Anyone from the comment, in public here to comment on this matter? Again, I know it sounds repetitive, but I would ask you to, again, state your name and address, please.
Paul Haiman, 511 Beverly, 56-year resident of Lake Forest. Before the city council considers spending more money, let us examine the facts. I believe that the old municipal facility has salt storage. So, if I understand the facts correctly, the city is going to spend money to demolish the salt storage near town and spend additional funds to enlarge salt storage far from downtown Lake Forest. I believe that the old municipal facility is also used for storage of the hockey fencing used at West Park during the summer months. In conclusion, the old municipal facility does have uses for the city. I would hold back this motion until after the public hearing by the plan commission on December 10 regarding the establishment of the TIF. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? I think Vic may jump in here, but I'll say it again, this does not commit us to doing anything, only to solicit bids for this particular activity, so.
That's correct, and the council will be presented with those bids and make a decision at the appropriate time as to what, if any, action to take.
Okay, could I have a motion to direct the city manager to solicit bids for the demolition of structures on the Laurel Avenue property?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item, approval of a license agreement with the Music Institute of Chicago for Vowiler Hall located at 40 East Old Mill Road. Alderman Reisenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2008, the Music Institute assumed the lease at Vowiler Hall from the Lake Forest Symphony. This original lease expired in 2010, since then, there's been a series of one-year extensions. In September 2013, the Property and Public Lands Committee requested that the Music Institute either purchase the property or engage in a long-term lease agreement. The institute chose the option of a five-year lease at $43,000 per year. Separately, PPL has requested that a comprehensive master plan for the Grove Campus and Northcroft Park properties be developed by staff. Upon adoption of the comprehensive plan, the city will then revisit the Music Institute's options. In the meantime, PPL is recommending lease approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions of Alderman Reisenberg? Anyone from the public here to comment? If not, I'd ask the council for a motion of approval license agreement with the Music Institute of Chicago for Vowiler Hall located at 40 East Old Mill Road. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Pity. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Again, this is only an opportunity for the public to address the council on any items that are not on this evening's agenda. Anyone care to speak? Okay, move on to item number five, items for omnibus vote consideration, and I want to clarify, Bob, are we going to take off item number six and put that under new business?
We can either do that, or the council, or actually, the finance committee heard an update from Michael Thomas, we'll just need to make sure that the motion reflects the new price, if that's acceptable to the council.
Okay. Then what we'll do is, I'll read all the omnibus items, there are 11. If any council member cares to take any of them separately, we can do so, otherwise I'll ask for a motion to approve at the end. Item number one, approval of the November 17, 2014 city council meeting minutes. Item number two, the check register for period October 25 to November 21, 2014. Item number three, approval of a three-year professional services agreement with Lake Forest Bank and Trust for banking services and Vantiv for credit card processing services. Number four, approval of a supplemental payment in the amount of $35,000 to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Number five, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter Four of the City Code regarding liquor licenses. Number six, award of bid for replacement of an ambulance for the fire department included in the FY 2015 capital equipment budget with revised pricing as discussed. Number seven, award of the bid for the replacement of a pickup truck for the Streets Sanitation Section included in the FY 2015 capital equipment budget. Number eight, authorization to dispose of city property. Number nine, approval for the use of Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, grant funding for the McClory Bike Path Project. Item number 10, award of the bid for the water plant intake well algae pre-screen project. And number 11, consideration of recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of tentative and final plat approval of a two-lot re-subdivision, the Church of St. James subdivision, property located on the west side of Waukegan, north of Windwood Drive, and is commonly known as 1380 North Waukegan Road. Approval of a motion granting tentative and final plat approval. Vic?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did note that there were a couple of Scrivener's errors on the minutes, and if the minutes can be approved as part of this, subject to the correction of those errors.
Great, thank you. Any member of the council wish to take any of these items individually?
I'd just like to make a quick comment about item number four, which is the approval of a supplemental payment to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. This is the state-run pension plan that the municipalities all contribute to, given certain, and I didn't have a chance to go and look at how underfunded they are, but it's ironic, to say the least, that we're being told that this year, we can have a reduction in our contribution of $35,000. I think it's very prudent of us, because these accounts are kept separately, to turn that reduction into a supplemental payment, which is what's happening. So, we're not accepting the reduction, we are going to use the reduction to supplement our contribution, and therefore, try to get ahead of this issue to some small extent. But only in Illinois would an underfunded pension plan call you up and say, oh, guess what, you don't have to give your full contribution this year. So, I
Well, Alderman, let me just clarify, because I know Elizabeth is probably ready to jump out of her seat. This is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, actually, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund is one of the best-funded in the country at 87 percent. This is one that the state has very little control over, maybe there's a coincidence there, or not. But actually, because of the fact that they have greater investment authority in terms of what they did, they realized a fairly prosperous year in 2014, and that's the reason why. So, I think what this really does is it helps us take our 80 percent funded up to 80-plus percent at that point in time. So, but, yeah, good point, but I just wanted to make sure, in case any IMRF representatives are out there watching, we don't want to speak poorly of their efforts.
Well, they're to be commended, but 80 percent is not 100 percent.
Right.
Anything else on the omnibus? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Pity, very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances, consideration of a resolution regarding the termination of an intergovernmental agreement and approval of a wind-up agreement with District 67, and ordinances terminating special service areas 33 and 36. Final reading presented by Victor Filippini, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This was a matter that the council did discuss at your last meeting. The matter before you relates to an intergovernmental agreement that the city entered into in 1994 with District 67. That agreement expired in July of this year and left a few loose ends. What we are trying to address in the actions tonight are how to handle those loose ends. In particular, there's some things relating to the agreement itself, and there's a resolution before you that would approve a wind-down agreement. Note, wind-down, I had it wind-up, but at the council's suggestion, I have changed the nomenclature, and that's to identify just some of the acknowledgements that would otherwise be addressed in the context of closing out that 1994 agreement. The other two actions that are before you would be the termination of two of five special service areas that the city enacted in connection with that intergovernmental agreement. The two that are impacted by this relate to Regents Row and
Thorndale.
And the Thorndale subdivision. The agreement, or the two resolutions, let me set that, the two ordinances would terminate the future levy of taxes in those two special service areas. Additionally, the agreement calls for the remaining three special service areas to be terminated after the fiscal year 2018 tax levy. So, 2019 would be the last year of taxes. The reasons for that are the result of a negotiation with the school district in terms of some of the open questions under that agreement, and the 2019 date would coincide with the final payments, as I understand it, of the bonds that they issued in connection with the 1994 agreement and the related special service areas. The reason for the selection of the two special service areas for termination is that those two special service areas have not produced any school-aged children in their life, and as a result, they seemed appropriate to wind down earlier than the other three. All of them will be terminating earlier than originally scheduled in the establishing ordinances for those special service areas. I suppose with one exception, I can't remember which is the earliest of them. One of them would expire on its own in 2019, the other two, the middle four, thank you. I appreciate that. So, that's what's before you tonight. It's the approval of the resolution of the agreement and the two termination ordinances. I would note that there is a modest amendment to those ordinances from what was in your packet. It appears in Section Three of the ordinances regarding the timing of the recordation, so that the termination ordinances would be recorded only upon the execution of the wind-down agreement. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Any questions for Vic?
Yeah, one question would be, what is the actual special service that's being provided to any of these areas by District 67?
I think I would have to defer to, I don't know if there's a representative of District 67 here, but I would defer to them. I know that in meetings I have attended with District 67, they did identify as part of their planning, certain improvements to their system that were intended to accommodate the growth relating to these subdivisions. I am not sure how those are delivered, and I don't have any more detail of it, but I understand that was part of the bond issue that was supported by the special service areas.
Okay, do we know how much money was actually collected by District 67 during the course of the last 20 years to provide this special service?
Well, I think Alan Albus from District 67 and 115 is here, and so those questions, maybe if Alan could come forward, he might be able to answer those questions more specifically.
Before he does, I'd like to ask a question also. I'm reading from the Amberly Woods Special Service Area, from the document that was signed in '06, and it reads in part, "The recent growth in the population of school-aged children in new residential subdivisions and developments, which are anticipated to cause an increase in the school population in the near future, has stressed and will continue to stress the current resources of the schools. Such new subdivision or developments will adversely impact the district, whereby the tax revenues generated from the special services area shall be used to finance school facility improvements directly attributable to the new subdivision." I'd like to repeat that. That the special service areas shall, money shall be used to finance school facility improvements directly attributable to the subdivision. Goes on to say, "Revenues from the special service area are needed to finance school facility improvements and programs to serve as such development." I'd like to know what facility improvements were made that are directly attributable to these four new subdivisions?
Okay, I'll start with the, well, first of all, good evening. My name is Alan Albus, I work with District 67 and District 115. I do apologize, I was employed by the districts in 2006, so a lot of this predates me, so I've tried to piece together as much information as I can. I will start with the question I heard as I was coming up, how much money has been derived from the SSAs, and I would estimate it to be around about three-quarters of a million dollars to date, so that's from 2000 to present. In regard to special services, I'm going to read from some information I had found in the district, and then I'll answer that question directly. In 1996-97, the District 67 Board of Education initiated a study of the long-term facility needs of the district. The study was initiated in large part due to enrollment forecasts that projected student population to grow by 17 percent over the coming decade. Actual growth during the period is estimated to be close to projected at 14 and 1/2 percent. It was determined that a combination of expansions and renovations would be necessary to meet the needs of students. The district was committed to funding the improvements through non-referendum means. Ultimately, a plan was formulated that utilized a variety of funding sources, including fund balance, long-term debt, state grants, operational savings, interest earnings, TIF receipts, and special service assessments. In 1998 and 1999, the district issued $12.8 million of debt. That's not all the debt that was issued, but it's really relevant around this discussion. The debt incurred is scheduled to be paid off in 2019. It was projected that SSAs would fund 3.8 million of the aforementioned issuance, so it's fallen significantly short of that. Now, to this, to your direct question, there were improvements made to all the schools, but as you read from the ordinance, the direct relation to the subdivisions that the students would attend, the easiest one to talk about would be Deer Path Middle School. Deer Path had additions of about 19,905 square feet added on to it. There was, I believe, a science wing, classroom wing, and a library added on. Using a construction figure of about $200, that would come out to about $4 million alone in construction costs, so that doesn't even account for the equipping of the area. equipping of the area. So I hope that answers your
Oh, actually Of course it did not, because if these aren't directly related to these subdivisions, this was like an omnibus spending plan that was developed by the school district sixty-seven, and then was made to have five of these communities pay for that in lieu of a referendum. It's what, there's no, this, these expenditures are not directly related to the subdivisions and the impact that they've had on the schools?
I would disagree with that.
Okay.
I would disagree with that, too. I mean, I was living in a neighborhood where the school was doubled in size, and it was in light, and I was involved with the Plan Commission at the time, and it was maybe the zoning board, I can't remember my, it's been so long, but there was a significant amount of construction, there was a significant amount of population growth, and it wasn't entirely going to be funded by five developments. There were, I think Mr. Aldus mentioned, at least four or five different funding sources, this being one of them, which has generated a grand total of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars against, and if you just prorated the budget for the renovation work, it would have to be, well, I mean, you know, you could do the math, but it's going to be a lot more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. There was a lot of community participation in this, and one of the sources of growth was all the new development that was happening, and I think that that, while you, it's like advertising, Jack, you can't trace it to a specific sale. I suppose you could if you interviewed every buyer, but it's there, and it was a portion of the growth, and they're funding, or have funded, a portion of the growth. And to the extent that the developers agreed to this, and the people who signed contracts to buy these properties, it was all there. Whether they understood it or not, I don't know. If they were properly advised, and I think most people in this community are reasonably well-advised by attorneys when they close on a piece of real estate, I would imagine that they knew about it. And what's happened in the ensuing decade, you know, the second decade of this process, which is, you know, coming around now, is we had a huge recession, nobody moved, and the population declined. I mean, that was not forecast until, well, it was never forecast until it happened in two thousand and eight. So I, you know, decisions have to get made based on the information at hand, and I think that, I think that, I think it's a good idea to, I mean, Regents Row could have conceived, could have been reasonably projected to produce very few people, very few students. Thorndale, obviously, hasn't been built, so clearly that didn't fly, but I think, I think, I think those are the exceptions that prove the rule.
Well, I think it's interesting to point out how many school-aged children are in all of these five SSA districts currently, because it gives you some measure of where we are today, and the number, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe is thirty-seven children. And the SSA agreement, or the use of the SSA, requires, it requires, it's a very nebulous statute, by the way. If you've ever read this thing, this is classic government stuff. It basically allows the government to come up with all kinds of reasons to obtain money from people. But it does have one fairly specific requirement, and that is that the revenues obtained be used primarily for the benefit of the people from whom the revenues are obtained. And there is no evidence that that has occurred in this case, okay? None. There's no evidence that these revenues have been, have primarily benefited the people in Regents Row. There's no evidence that it has primarily benefited the people in Middle Fork. Clearly, Thorndale doesn't have any kids and doesn't have any development. Amberly Woods doesn't have any kids, it hasn't benefited them, okay? So I think, you know, in the beginning, the use of the SSA was very creative, and it was based on a prediction. Ten years into this, we knew that the prediction was false. Twenty years into it, we for sure know that the prediction was false, yet the revenues are there. Nobody's asking for return of revenues in this situation, but this was, to my interpretation, and I think this is a very legitimate interpretation, this was creative financing based on a prediction which proved to be false. I think the basis of the original use was improper, the maintenance of it is improper, and by the way, the intergovernmental agreement, which requires the city to accumulate or collect these funds, states something very specific. It's intended to apply only when a new residential subdivision will, will, no other word is used, will adversely impact the district. As of now, there is no evidence that any of these developments adversely impact the district, either now, or will in the future, or have in the past. Therefore, the agreement is, to my opinion, void. There's no reason for us to enforce this agreement or to collect these funds further.
I'm going to ask one thing. Everyone who's here this evening will have a chance to speak. I would ask you not to applaud, I would ask you just to hold your comments until you have the opportunity, everyone will have the opportunity. We want to get through this just like you do and find the right resolution, so thank you.
I have a slightly different question, and it's maybe sort of a simplistic one, but I'm going to ask it anyways. When we addressed this issue at our last city council meeting, we were presented with an ordinance that a majority of us approved first reading of, and I think, and I'm a little puzzled as to how we got from that ordinance to the one that we're presented with tonight, because it seemed to me that a couple weeks ago, again, I was pretty sure that a majority of us agreed, I think six of us, that, you know, we approved first reading of that ordinance, and I believe that the whole reason we were coming back for some additional discussion tonight was because Alderman Edelman said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but said words to the effect of, hey, I'm in agreement with this, too, but I'd sort of like to not have to pay the school district three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, you know, can we bring it back to sort of address that issue? That was my understanding of what happened, and maybe my understanding's wrong, but Go ahead, Mike.
Just to clarify, I said I was totally in favor of terminating all of the SSAs, but I was vehemently opposed to the city funding the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
Thanks, that's, that was my understanding, but you just said it better than I said you said it. So anyways, it's my long-winded question is this, I'm a little puzzled as to how we got from that to here, and my second question is, is that since we approved first reading of something that six of us agreed on, I
Well, Alderman, I guess the city council is certainly at liberty to approve any motion that you want. I guess maybe I misinterpreted what you heard at the last meeting, and I maybe overemphasized Alderman Edelman's point, that I did not think there was any sentiment on the city council to cash out, if you will. Now, certainly, if there are a majority members of the city council that are willing to do that, you can make a motion and you can do that. I think we tried to bring to you an alternative that allowed this matter to be resolved over a shorter period of time, but without having to make any cash payment.
And, and so the whole rationale for the four-year extension, or the four-year continuation of some of these SSAs is to not have to pay the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars?
That's correct.
I kind of miss seeing the nexus.
Well, here's the nexus, is that, as it was reported, I think at the last meeting, and I think it's an important piece, is that debt was issued on the representation that these special service areas would be in place. The debt is there until twenty nineteen. Unlike staffing or operational costs where they could lay off teachers or whatever the case might be, there is debt that debt holders need to be paid. So the real question is, and I think what the issue that was discussed at the last meeting, was that that cash out was really the net present value of taking it to the debt payments or the debt retirement in twenty nineteen. So the question, I think that the heart of the question that we're at tonight is, who pays?
Right.
Do the residents who are in the SSAs continue to pay, or is that cost spread amongst all residents, and then we have to decide how is best to do that?
I understand, and I know it's sort of a compromise, and, you know, compromise is necessary sometimes. What I'm having, what I'm struggling with a little bit is just, you know, we talked at our last meeting about fairness, and what's fair and what's unfair, and what's fundamentally fair, and it's not, it's not any, if it's unfair, it's unfair, and it's unfair for former years, if it's unfair. But I realize there's a lot of issues that need to be raised.
Well, and I think that was the question that some of the aldermen had, and I think maybe that's where the staff got confused, is that there was certain aldermen that didn't think that this was unfair, that it was put in place, and everybody knew going into it what the rationale was, and I think, you know, Alderman Tac and Reisenberg are very articulate in sort of where the position is right now, and I guess it's easy to say, is there an impact today in looking at what that is? And the answer might easily be no, but unfortunately, the costs were obligated fifteen years ago, and so how do you just run out the remaining four years of those costs?
Bob, if I can just respond to that one point. The SSA tax is about a ten percent effective kicker on the regular ad valorem taxes that sixty-seven collects from these new properties, and it's actually five percent if you include District 115 in there, but we're talking District 67. So if we were to terminate all of the SSAs, it's a ten percent squeeze on the underwriting of those bonds, and that's not as significant the hardship is as if we cut out fifty percent of the revenues that it was underwritten on. I want to back up, though, because you talked about fairness, and so I've got to ask some probative questions. Kathy Everett Farm Preserve, does that have an SSA?
I don't believe so.
And wasn't that done after these others were done? Then Anna Lane and Paddock Lane, why were some of the new subdivisions levied with a
Stonebridge.
Stonebridge?
Stonebridge was part of the Conway annexation agreement of nineteen eighty-eight, so that was predating even though the subdivision came afterward.
But we, there have been new subdivisions that weren't subjected to the special service area, and so there does seem to be a question of fairness. Why were, why were some levied the special service area, and why were some not? I see both sides of this. I think back when the first one was created, it was done in good faith. Projections were made on what we could foretell coming down the road, student population growth, so forth, but I think we can all concede it just, it does not hold true today. And even though I'm real pleased with what we have before us, because my big bone of contention was the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand we were paying to release the hold on the five acres up by Middle Fork that has no value, really, and I thought the city was the last one who should bear any financial burden here, I still think this could be substantially improved. I think if you're talking fairness, the fair thing to do is to dissolve all the SSAs, because the school district, yes, I know you underwrote bonds based on the cash flow stream, and again, I reiterate, the SSA tax only constitutes about ten percent of the total taxes collected. A typical Regency Row SSA tax is five hundred dollars, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars today. A typical Regency Row unit's taxed twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year in total ad valorem, including the SSA, of which sixty-seven gets about twenty-five, twenty-five point nine percent. So I think the fair thing to do would be for you on behalf of District 67 to say, you know what? Not only did we collect the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we collected seven-point-five million dollars in ad valorem over all this time, which helped to underwrite the bonds. Let's just be fair and look at it today and dissolve all the SSAs. And again, I'm very much in favor, I think it's a great improvement what we have before us, but I think we can do better.
Except that what we have before us, I mean, in order to approve this where you terminate some but not others, and there's no more justification for some than others, I mean, you have to be a legal and ethical contortionist to accept this. I mean, you really do.
Mike is right.
Any other questions or comments of either Vic or of Alan?
I have one, and it's, it almost is, so Willow Lake, I mean, just suppose we went with this proposal that I don't like and that I'm against. What happened to Willow Lake?
There's one unit in there that's occupied, maybe two today.
Two. I mean, no disrespect, but you guys have been, you had the opportunity to take the high road, and you should have, and you didn't, and you should, you should absolutely reconsider your point of view.
Over the course of the year, this has been discussed a lot in our finance committee meetings, and it's interesting, standing here, listening to the conversation, because I think some of the same views have been put out, and the rationale for taking Regents Row out and Thorndale's, because no kids have been generated from either of those. All the other ones, kids have been generated, whether it's a small amount, when you gave the, when you quoted the figure of thirty-seven students, I would have to look back, because as I said, this conversation's gone on over a year. That may have been a snapshot in time of what we're generating now, but I don't know, that I would say is highly unlikely, the number of students generated since two thousand. In taking the high road, as you say, there are people on our finance committee who expressed some of the same views that were articulated here. The buildings were improved, the expansions were made, and the debt was incurred, and the repayment schedule is far shorter than what was projected, but it was still done in good faith and was still scheduled to be had out. So what we've talked about with terminating them, lining that up with the debt, and aligning it to only areas where students have been produced, was trying to find a balance between the different ends of the spectrum here.
You know, I'm not saying it wasn't done in good faith, and, you know, but twenty years ago was done in good faith, but it's been pointed out that really what was expected to happen didn't, and what was done in good faith at this late date should be changed. It just should be changed.
I think there's another
This is patently unfair for these people to be subjected to this.
There's another viewpoint, in that what was expected to happen did happen. There were improvements made, and there was debt incurred.
But those improvements were not made primarily for the benefit of the subjects of these SSAs, and the fact, you know, listen, I've been dealing with this for a year and a half now, and I've asked this question for a year, is what were the specific improvements? You know, how much money was applied for the benefit of these people? And nobody to date has given me the answer to that question, and I believe that that's probably because nobody knows, because it didn't happen. Nothing was applied specifically for the benefit of these people. Otherwise, somebody could tell me, and I have the same problem you do, even more so. I came into this much later than you did, okay? I had nothing to do with any of this. I've lived here the entire time, okay, and so I'm familiar with all this. My guess is most of your student growth came from Conway Farms, who has never subjected to this. There's far more children on Conway Farms than there are in Middle Fork Farms or these other developments, and yet that was pre-SSA. And by the way, they were offered the opportunity to participate in an SSA and had to vote on it, and they turned it down wisely, so I would guess. But anyway, I mean, you know, we have two things. Number one, I don't believe that the city council requires District 67 to do anything. We authorized the SSAs, and we can deactivate them and refuse to collect monies for them, and as I mentioned, I don't believe the council has an obligation under the IGA to continue to do this. So I think it really is an issue for the council, you know, we You know, we appreciate you coming and providing District 67's viewpoint, but I think it's our issue.
Any other questions for Alan while we have him up here? Alan, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Could I see by a raise of hands, those of you that would like to make a comment this evening on this matter? Okay. See, about five. I would ask two or three things. Number one is, please limit your comments to three minutes, which is our standard practice here in Council. Number two, if you hear your prior residents making the similar comment you were going to make, I would ask you to consider whether you want to come up and repeat yourself. And number three, again, I would ask that anyone in the audience, limit their response, their reaction. Again, the Council's interested in getting your input and your feedback and your opinion, and we're eager to hear it. So, could I see, again, by a show of hands, and we'll start coming up. Ma'am, would you start, please? And again, when you come up, please introduce yourself and state your address.
My name is Catherine Duffy. I live at 1102 Emmons Court in Middle Fork, and I am on the homeowners board there. First of all, I would like to thank our Third Ward Alderman very strongly for their efforts so far in presenting this and fighting our cause. And I heard two things in what was just presented with Alan, that it funded a library and a science lab, that those were improvements made, and I agree with your point. Our children were not the only ones who used that library and that science lab. And the other thing, the $350,000 shortfall, all students who attend those schools are benefiting from those improvements. Spread it out and let everybody pay for it, instead of just the ones under the SSAs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm a resident of Lake Forest for 45 years. I'm also with the Realtor organization. I believe all of you got an email from me in the past week. And here is what we think has happened, along with everything else, with the crash of 2007 and '08. Number one, let's talk about impact fees. Every house built in Lake Forest pays impact fees. That is a fair way for 67 and 115 to get their income for students coming in. The special service areas is not. How, as we've said, 37 students in the past, what, 10 years? So, impact fees are huge. $10,000 for 67, 10 to 12, depending upon the size of the property, for 115. And why would we need a special service area for five subdivisions? And not for the others? Along with the 1.75% tax that goes to Lake Forest Open Lands for Middle Fork and for Everett Farms. So, for me, that's the critical. Two houses built or two that have an impact fee. So, I think what we need to understand is Middle Fork has not done anything. There is no exact donation for Middle Fork. There is no school there. The five acres of land that was held for Middle Fork never got built on. There is no school, so what is the direct impact? There are no special services provided to Middle Fork. There are no special services provided to Regents Row or any of the others. So, for the Realtors who are trying to recover, and for the residents of Lake Forest who are already paying a very large impact fee for any new construction, which we haven't had for the last four years, I think Kathy can agree with me here that we are finally getting builders back after almost eight years. Correct? We have how many? We have builders coming back and building houses. That's impact fees. That's the big money. So, there are no special services provided to Middle Fork or Regents Row or any of the others. There also wasn't any transparency from District 67 about where the money went. I believe that was covered in your last City Council meeting. All we're asking for, well, as Realtors and as the constituents and the residents, is that let our market come back. Please don't stop it. It's not pretty out here. We are not getting anyone outside, we aren't getting the city buyer, it's too expensive for them to come here. The taxes are the lowest in Lake County per dollar, but we cannot get them out of Volmet and out of Glencoe and out of Highland Park. It's too far to drive, and it's too expensive to live here. And our schools are not rated as well as the other communities, unfortunately. So, the money going in isn't working so well for us. So, there were no special services provided. We feel it's an unreasonable addition to the citizens of Lake Forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Hi. My name's Richard Wood. I live at 1032 Northwestern Avenue, Regents Row. I quickly want to thank our aldermen. They have done an absolutely remarkable job representing their constituents. And I also want to thank someone who doesn't usually get any credit, and that's the caucus to find these two individuals. They're just unbelievable representatives of our community and our ward in particular. First, I was out of the country, so I couldn't be here at the last meeting, but I was pleased by the six to two vote that I definitely heard, and I agree with you, Alderman Waldeck, I heard, six to two in favor of eliminating all SSAs. Like Alderman Tack, I've been involved in this for more than a year and a half, and I've been very patient, but we're now at the culmination. And I'm perplexed, as at least one of you is, with how this morphed from a six to two vote to eliminate them all to what we now have before us. But let me say, as my, excuse me, as my last comment on behalf of Regents Row, we're pleased by the fact that it appears there's unanimity to eliminate that SSA. But what I really want to get into, and at this, at this point, I risk offending our two aldermen, because they did such a good job explaining the legal underpinnings, that the fact that one of them is a doctor is, I think he went in the wrong profession. But, but I know you've been schooled by the Council, Vic. Vic and I go back a long way. We actually worked together once on a matter adverse to the city, and we won't repeat what we talked about on that matter, if he remembers. But he's given you advice, but let me give you my perspective. I've been a lawyer, an administrative lawyer, for 38 years. And in that capacity, I deal with government units. I don't deal at the city level, I deal at the federal level. But I'm a believer in letting the government body that did something fix it before we think of anything else, and that's the L-word litigation. So, my prior focus up to now has been on fairness. We've talked about that, that this is wrong, and I think we've heard echoed that. But I just, I just want to quickly, and say that the, the SSAs are based on the Illinois Constitution that was passed in 1970. And they were formed to provide special services to designated areas. Think of the word "special services." The statute, it was not self-implementing, so the Illinois Legislature had to pass a law. And there they define special service area is an area in which special government services are provided, in addition to those services provided generally throughout the community. Well, I'm not a school attorney, but everyone who lives in District 67 is entitled to go to school. So, it is no special service. That is a right. It's given to everyone. The SSAs before us fall into two categories. Those that have received no services, and then by definition, no special services. And then those that have received services, i.e., they've sent children to the school, but they are entitled to be there. It's not a special service. One other point, I just thought of it today, after a year and a half, is the fact that this money was spent on all the schools, presumably also including Cherokee. No resident of our ward could possibly attend Cherokee School, unless they live, I believe, on the Inwentia grounds. But none of the SSAs are anywhere near subject to Cherokee. So, that money, we are paying for that, and no chance any children in these SSAs will go there. So, in your comments, if you're not inclined, I think you should eliminate all SSAs. And if you don't feel that way, tell me what special services were provided. So, I would ask the City Council today to end all five SSAs. And I think there's one other thing to consider. I mean, we have, on behalf of Regents Row, said, stop it, that's fine. We don't want a refund for what we've paid. We're willing to forgive that. But, and this is the if, and this is what I would normally not say to an administrative body at this point, but if this goes to litigation, and if my theory is right, that no special services have been provided, then these statutes are invalid. And what does that mean? Any lawyer in his right mind is going to ask not for these to stop, but also for repayments. So, that is the risk that I believe you face. And then, just in comment to Alderman Padaleone's point, I was not given notice of this tax until I saw my title report. At that point, there was a contract in place, and if I'd tried to back out, I would have suffered financial loss. So, I took it, but I wasn't happy, and that is maybe why I'm here today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anyone else? Sir?
A.J. Schultz, 1115 Acorn Trail. Sorry to follow Richard's lead here, but just think about taxation for a moment, and what taxation is all about. It's about representation and fairness and equity. And you, as representatives of the community, and appointed responsibilities, back to the Constitution, the federal Constitution and the state Constitution. Think about what we heard here tonight and fairness, and think of a legal concept of equity. Equity, you know, is all about fairness. Equity also, whenever you're aware of something that's inappropriate, there's a chance to remedy, or otherwise, what they have the concept of clean hands. So, the committee has been informed about the wrong, i.e. the no accountability, the inability to trace and track the funds. The statute on its face intends to be violated. So, that awareness, I would say and ask, that all of the SSAs be terminated. In other words, notification is there, and the obligation to take the high road and to terminate the funds. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Anyone else?
Paul Hamon, 511 Beverly, 56-year resident of Lake Forest. Developers are smart people, so five different developers would not have encumbered their property with special service areas unless they knew that they were valid costs. Let us look at the facts. West Campus is approximately 160,000 square feet. At $240 a square foot, puts a value of about $38 million on that building. There are 38 classrooms at West Campus, so each classroom is about $1 million, when you include halls, bathrooms, offices, and all other ancillary rooms. Let us look at East Campus. They just spent $57 million on 30 classrooms, or about $2 million a classroom. Remodeling is more expensive because fishing wires through closed walls and bringing heating and cooling through existing structures is problematic and more expensive. So, the five special area added about 37 students, or about two classrooms. At $2 million a classroom, that means that the special service area added about $4 million in capital cost to the school district. If you consider that the impact fee for the grade school is $10,000, for the high school, that's 12, so that's a total of 22. And with 40 homes, 40 homes times 22 means it would be $800,000. So, you're basically short by 1.2 million when you use the $12 a classroom number. What really concerns me is the development of the old municipal facility site, if it becomes a reality. If Lake Forest has 2,000 grade school students and about 2,000 high school students from 8,000 homes, with the proposed 100 housing units at the old municipal facility, that would add about 50 students or about three more classrooms. At $12 a classroom, that would add another $6 million in capital cost for the city. Based on the City Council's last vote on the special service area, the existing residents, like myself, will have to incur another $6 million, plus any additional costs with TIF. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions by members of the Council, questions to Vic or to Bob? Sir, would you come up and address, name and address, please?
My name is Joe Wallace, and I'm a resident at Amberly Woods. And I want to congratulate our aldermen on their human efforts for our cause on this behalf. What I'd like to comment on is that those facilities that were built in District 67, the science and library, my question to the representative from District 67 is, were those facilities built exclusively for the benefit of the SSA properties? Jack, that's something like your question. Do you have an answer?
I'd like to clarify a couple of things. The 37 students, I've heard it said twice, that only 37 students were ever produced. Again, I believe that's a wrong number. I think that was a snapshot. That is a, that is a wrong number. It's 37 current students from all of those developments attend the school. It's not a cumulative number, but it rolls. I mean, presumably, it may have been more at some point. It certainly has been less at some points.
And Dick, the other comment about Cherokee, and I apologize, because I probably wasn't as articulate as I need to be. I focused on Deer Path only, because every student in the district eventually goes through Deer Path. So, I only referenced the, the construction costs at Deer Path. So, I would argue that no money from an SSA went to the Cherokee improvements. What makes this difficult, not only not having been here during the time that this was done, is this was a component of a bigger plan. There were renovations and improvements made to all the schools to accommodate growth. I don't know any district that would build a facility and say it's only for these 10 kids out of this subdivision. No. But all the improvements were made to accommodate the projected growth, and a lot of that growth did come.
Thank you. Any other questions by the Council? Mike?
It was a six to two vote last meeting, right?
It was.
And it was David and I who were the nays. So, what were you two guys thinking?
I mentioned it, when we voted at first, it was the first reading, okay? And my point is, and I was going to ask this question, how we get from here to there, I wasn't in favor of a payment to the school district at all, because I believe that the school district has already received more than just payment for any additional students or any, any difficulties that they received as a result of these developments. So, I was in favor of ending all SSAs with no payments and merely ending the program period, but that wasn't offered to me at that time.
I, I actually called Mike a couple of days ago, one-on-one, and said that I, I might have appeared that I disagreed with what you said. In fact, I did agree with what he said, when I, when I really, when I really thought about it, is that there was no reason that this city should be making a payment to make these five SSAs go away. no reason that this city should be making a payment to make these five SSAs go away. I just think, in my passion or desire to make them go away, I was willing to agree to anything, quite frankly. But there's no way in my mind that, I mean, these things should go away, and this city should not have to make any payment to make that action happen. That's where I'm at right now.
I think that would be great, if that worked. It doesn't seem to me, I mean, and again, I'm struggling to make sure I understand all the pieces of this. At core, this strikes me as the kind of wrenching subject that people who've sat in this seat before are dealing with, when people long before any of us made these decisions, thinking at the time that it was a really good idea. We had this growth in the district, there were things that needed to be done to update the schools. And I'm sure that was true. I'm sure it was all done with forthright and planning, and all of what we would have expected of the city staff and the city volunteers working together. So the issue is, here we are now faced with something that we're thinking we probably wouldn't be doing. If this was brought to us now, I'm pretty sure, I get a sense of this group, we wouldn't say yes to it. But it isn't being brought to us that way now. It's not, it's a fait accompli that has financial implications, and, you know, I mean, fair is always a complicated concept. It does seem that this doesn't appear to be fair to the districts impacted, in terms of how many more people are benefited. But this was, obviously, Dick, it would have been great if you had seen that ahead, and I'm sorry to hear that, but apparently, it was agreed upon as something that was appropriate at that point in time. So what do we do about that? I mean, there are financial implications here. Somebody has to meet those debt obligations that, as I understand it, are counting on the income from the SSAs to do it. So, you know, if we could just make this go away, I'd be thrilled. I don't see that as an option. So we have to figure out, I mean, I guess that's the, how do we go from here to there, Randy, but, you know, there, I know this isn't the only time that people have sat in these seats, thinking about what were they thinking, but, you know, it happened, and it seemed like a good idea at the time. So now we've got to figure out, how do we solve it in a reasonable way? And I don't think just walking away from the SSAs and saying, "It's not working out," is what we can do. So what can we do and make the best of this, I guess, is what we're trying to figure out?
I'd like to pick up on that, because I agree with a lot of what you said. I know some of the things I said before probably made me an ogre, but, you know, there's been some pretty healthy constituent-oriented politics going on here. And we all have constituents, and only two of us have constituents that are affected by this. This is part of the sort of insidious nature of this issue. I would love to get rid of this issue. I think I would echo Prue's point. It's fraught with issues. My issue is the $350,000. I mean, it's roughly half of the entire stream of revenue that's been ever received from these things. And I have to explain to my constituents that we're making a voluntary, extra budgetary expenditure to bail out contractual obligations of a group of people who live in a different ward. And who presumably, with Mr. Wood's potential exception, and maybe a couple of others, could have, if properly informed, done this with eyes open, and probably many did. So my, I guess, in the end, I agree with Alderman Reisenberg. These things should all go away, and District 67 should bear the cost, not the city.
Alderman Waldeck, were you going to? No?
No.
I say motion, as if you were going to say something?
No.
Okay.
I was just nodding.
With authority.
At George's last sentence.
Any other comments? Alderman Mariano?
I would like to comment. The schools are very important to me. I don't have children, and they're still very important to me. The SSAs, in my view, looking back, sitting where we're sitting today, absolutely unfair. And I think that they do need to be terminated. The sooner, the better. I certainly agree with my colleagues from Ward Three, and many of us, I think. The question of fairness, I mean, clearly, we can all discuss and debate that, and I think we would all agree that there is an element, if not wholly unfair, there's an element of unfairness here. Regardless of who ultimately bears the cost of this, it will be the residents, and it will be all of us. And we just need to own up, and do what's right, and take care of it. So however we determine to defies these bonds and defies these costs, we need to do that. The schools are important to me. I want to be clear on that point. They're important to all of us. They're important to who we are as a community, and so we will take care of the schools. Let's be clear on that point. But this SSA construct has not benefited those who are paying for it. We should all pay for it. We are all residents, and we are all beneficiaries of a healthy school system. Thank you.
Alderman, anyone? Are you going to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Wood's experience is not unusual, that he found out when his attorney reviewed the title commitment, probably a few days before closing, maybe even the day of closing. I represented someone, that happened to us. He said, "Forget about it, it's the minimus." And the reality is, most of the realtors aren't so meticulous that they include that in the listing, but they do put a disclaimer at the bottom of their listings, "Don't rely on this, do your own due diligence." And an extreme case would be, you could come to closing, find out about it, and throw the gauntlet down and say, "Hey, this wasn't disclosed by the seller's realtor. You seller, you absorb it, or you and your realtor absorb it, or you take a third, the realtor a third, I'll eat a third, but let's," you know, you can negotiate it out. The seller had as much to lose at closing as a buyer does. In fact, the seller arguably has more to lose. Having said that, it really is inequitable. And, George, I know you're in the real estate businesses, are you, Don? If you guys go out and finance 100% of your projected cash flow, don't your lenders require some sort of a coverage ratio, so that if we were to abolish this, and they lose their 10%?
We have special lenders.
Yeah, I know.
Coverage of 95%, right? But, you know...
And you know, being in the finance business, there are coverage ratios, so that we're not going to create such an extreme financial hardship for District 67. And I don't mean to treat District 67 like a stepchild, that they're like a cousin, they're a first cousin to us. Clearly, they're autonomous from us, because when they get in trouble, we have nothing to do with it. But they are a cousin, they're a relative, so we want to maintain good family relations with them. But the right thing to do here is to terminate the SSAs, and I think they can endure the financial consequences.
Let me see if I can kind of frame this, about where we are. We've had, obviously, some fairly healthy discussion, good input from residents. We have an item on the agenda, which basically asks the council to consider approving the ordinance, which would, for all intents and purposes, end the Thordale and Regents Row, and take Middle Fork through 2019, shorten the term of the Amberly SSA. And in return for that, no payment. So I think, Vic, let me ask you one point of clarification, to Kathy's comment. If we did first reading on an ordinance that was different than that, do we need a second reading for an ordinance that would be different than what was approved two weeks ago?
Yeah, let me answer that question and offer further identification of steps you might want to take. With respect to the first reading, that is a procedural step to allow the issue to be brought onto the table, let the discussion begin. It doesn't require that you go to second reading, or, which would be final reading, and it doesn't preclude you from changing things from first reading to final approval. So what you did last time, which, incidentally, there were two actions last time. One was to table the resolution which related to the then-wind-up, now wind-down agreement, and the other one was to grant first reading on the five termination ordinances. What is before you tonight, on the agenda, is consideration of the resolution, which would now be for the wind-down agreement, and termination of two of the ordinances. You can, and there's a little hitch to this, but it's something that can easily be addressed, you can decide not to act on the resolution, which means we just go through with the winding up of that agreement, based on what the agreement currently says. You can approve ordinances terminating all five of the SSAs. I would note, with the three that are not identified on the agenda, we will have to bring those back at a subsequent meeting to ratify those ordinances, just to make sure that we're fully square with the Open Meetings Act, because they weren't identified on this agenda. But the reason why you would want to take the action tonight is that if you're going to terminate, if that's the determination of the council, you want to do it before the end of the year, so that the ordinances can be filed before the end of the year, and so that the taxes will not be levied for the upcoming year. So if, I'm not necessarily good at reading tea leaves, and certainly less good at reading votes, but if I'm understanding the sense of the council, it seems that there is a sense to eliminate all five, or terminate all five of the SSAs, and that would be an approach that you could get to that outcome.
And would that necessitate, then, additionally, the consideration of the payment? Or would it be a termination?
We don't have any obligation for a payment. There's obviously other scales for measuring equity and measuring risk, and, you know, I think that the district's position, having relied on the SSAs and the intergovernmental agreement in issuing their bonds, may have a different view of the equity of the situation, and how the risk ought to be apportioned. It doesn't foreclose future discussions with the district, it just doesn't address how those discussions will conclude tonight.
And certainly, then, to that end, one of the third options perhaps could be, as I mentioned, the termination of all five with the addition of the payment.
That's an option, if the council wants to go that route. Correct.
Okay. I'm just laying out the alternatives.
Can I lay out?
One other alternative?
Sure.
And, at the sake of her getting mad at me, because I'm going to use her name, I'm going to call this the Ms. Duffy approach, that she just talked to you about in her presentation. And I'm probably going to need to have Alan come up, but earlier this evening, you approved your tax levy. That tax levy included school of 67's tax levy. And I think if I was in their shoes, one of the things I'd be concerned about is, you're making this decision after I'm locked in with the tax levy for next year. And unlike the city, the property taxes represent probably, what, 90, 95% of your total revenue that you get? So you're saying, "We're taking $86,000 away, and we're not giving them an opportunity to somehow generate that 86," but I don't know if the 2.48% increase is right at the cap, and you don't have any additional wiggle room. But my suggestion was going to be, if you do have wiggle room, that we give them the opportunity to come back to us before the end of the year. We can have a special meeting to adjust their component of the tax levy to address this. And I think that goes to Alderman Tax and some other people, that said, "We just think that this is fair and equitable, if everybody in town pays not just these five special service areas."
But whether or not they have the opportunity to do that, to come back before the end of the year, it doesn't really change the fact that we can go ahead and vote the way we want to vote right now. I mean, that's kind of a separate issue. It's not really a third option, the way I see it. I mean...
Well, no, because they can't change their levy without you approving the change in the levy. You approve the levy amount, so they couldn't increase the levy to cover that loss of $86,000 a year, unless you just want to say, "You have to live without $86,000."
It's like the Cubs, there's always next year.
Right. Exactly. Exactly. I don't think that's an issue for us to decide right now. I really don't. I think it's...
But see, by doing that, you are deciding it right now, is, I guess, my point. And the question is, do we want to give them an opportunity to come back to you, or not?
If I could address it, because it's really, I think it's a moot point. One thing that was nice for me, is sitting in the audience and hearing Elizabeth's presentation, because when we work on our tax levy, we actually land in very much the same place. Our levy is, I think it was 2.48%, but we expect to get 1.5% from existing property, and then about a 0.4 out of new construction. So even though we levied 2.48, we anticipate getting 1.9. That 2.48, we could change to 5% or 50%, it's not going to matter. We anticipate getting the 1.9. The SSAs have always been filed separately with the county from that, so it's not going to have an impact.
I guess, I would just like to say to my fellow Ward One Alderman, it does, it actually does matter to me that the finances of this, that we are thoughtful about the impact this is going to have on the schools. I mean, I think $86,000 is $86,000, and it's going to go on for a while, and I think we can't do that lightly. The relationship that we have with the schools is extremely important. Our schools are hugely important in this area, and it was the City Council who made the original SSA decision, I believe. So it seems to me, mindful of the schools' needs, it seems to me that we need to be very mindful of the schools' needs now. And so, you know, what we're trying to do here is make everybody whole, and figure out the right thing for the maximum number of people, and I absolutely get that, but I sure don't want to make a decision that I feel sort of says, "Well, let's do what we have to do, and let the schools figure this out." I mean, that just seems to me inappropriate. I mean, I just don't think that's a responsible thing to do. So I'm hearing our general sentiment, that we'd love to get rid of the SSAs. I'm just not quite to the point of being comfortable with how we're doing it. So, you know, I...
Prue, may I suggest that we keep talking with them?
With the schools?
Yes.
The school system?
I'm not opposed to Bob. Bob and I have, when we were meeting with them, tried to come up with creative ways to make them whole. And we thought we, I think there are other creative ways to do that, but I go along with Kathy. You know, we need to vote this evening to get rid of the SSAs, and then keep talking with them to find out if there are creative ways to make them whole. I'm not opposed to that. I just, these things need to go, these things need to go away. And then I think we can continue, if we weren't operating with this January 1 drop-dead date, you know, we could go off and talk, and, you know, and come up with a possible solution. Now I'm doing the flip, on the flip. We need to do what we need to do tonight because of this drop-dead date, and then we can continue to talk to them. And maybe there are, maybe there, I actually have got a couple of thoughts.
So Alan, did you say to us, "The $86,000 doesn't matter"? I must have not quite understood that properly. I'm pretty sure that I didn't, I know you didn't say...
To save him the steps of coming back up, what he meant was that, because they have levied to the maximum amount under the tax cap, adding $86,000 won't result in additional dollars under the tax levy to the school. I believe that's what his point was.
That is exactly it.
Okay. No, I knew I'd gotten it. I knew you hadn't said that, I just wanted to...
So here's where I think we are. We have kind of one of three options, right? Option one being passing the ordinance on the second reading, as it's proposed, which is terminating SSAs 33 and 36, leaving the other three in place to be sunsetted out up through 2019. Option number two would be for the council simply to vote for termination of all the, five of the SSAs this evening. And then option number three would be some modification similar to what we had two weeks ago, which was terminate all five of the SSAs with a payment of $350,000 in the district, and the whatever benefit it may be of getting control of the five-acre site in Middle Fork. So what I might propose is asking members of the council for a motion for one of those.
Don, does it have to be 350? I mean, I guess...
I thought I heard another option as well.
I mean, it seems to me that, what I was trying to say is, I want us to be mindful that this will impact the schools, and have the appropriate discussions with them. I don't know exactly what the timing has to be. I get that we want to get rid of the districts, the SSAs, if we can tonight, but isn't there some way that we can remain in discussions with the schools, acknowledging that this will impact them?
I think we can definitely remain in discussion with the schools, but, I mean, we keep coming back to, I keep coming back to the point that it's unfair for these people, I don't care what ward they live in, it's our community, it's unfair for them to be bearing the burden. It just, that's when I have a hard time wrapping my head around. And I had kids that went through those schools, and I care about them as much as anyone, but I don't think it matters what ward you live in. I think it just, you know, I keep coming back... I think it just, you know, I keep coming back to that.
Prue, if I could, I think you're correct, and I think Jack's correct. I think the expectation that I think I hear the council saying is that, should the council decide to terminate all five this evening, the expectation is we're going to continue discussions with the district to try to find solutions. I think you said it very well. Look, the schools are a part of this community. They're a part of the fabric of what makes Lake Forest such a unique place to live. And to do anything to harm them, I think, would be wrong. So I think it's prudent, should the council decide tonight to terminate the SSAs, it is prudent to do as many of you have suggested, which is continue the discussion, to try to find a solution to bridge the budget gap, so we're not penalizing the schools in the short and the intermediate term, which could then obviously result in a wider range of implications that I don't think any of us want.
I agree 100%.
So then, would someone care to propose a motion?
Sure. I'd like to move that we end all five SSAs. Simple motion.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Amber, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Rosenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Nadleman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all of you for your input and your patience. And it's important that each of you know that we heard you. And I think you, many of you said it tonight, we, as a community, are very fortunate to have the council that we have. So thank you very much. Next nominee on the agenda, new business, any new business this evening that we brought before the council? Any additional items for council discussion? I do have one. I'd like to, on behalf of city council and the entire city staff, which wish the entire community a very Merry Christmas, a happy holiday season, and a very prosperous and healthy 2015. We're all very blessed to live in our community, and we appreciate everything that all of us do for each other. So thank you. And hearing nothing else, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
That's good.